Good evening. Let's call this work session of the common council to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Gates.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miles.
Excused.
Councilmember Cress.
Here.
Councilmember Lingenfelter.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Wade.
Here.
Councilmember Yocum.
Good afternoon.
I have a call.
Thank you very much. All work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of the work session meetings is to provide the city council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on an agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. Before we begin with item number one, I just wanted to say to those in attendance, if you're here, we have an item on the business agenda, item 7A under new business. It was regarding the red light camera contract. That item has been polled, it will not be, that's polled by the city manager, it will not be for vote discussion or any action this evening. Would you care to comment, Mr. Bacon?
To Mayor Gates. Members of council, good evening. The announcement the mayor just gave, we'll give again at seven o'clock in case people are just coming for that meeting. And the second is, it's become clear to staff over the last couple of weeks that this is an item that isn't ready for your vote, your consideration tonight, and so that's why the chief and I asked to have it withdrawn. So we'll go forward with the meeting with item 7A.
Thank you very much. So starting with item number one, annual financial review of wastewater system. Good evening, mayor and council. So the purpose of tonight's agenda item is to provide you with a financial review of the wastewater system to include our current rates and our customer base, our revenues and expenditures, our five-year capital improvement plan, and of course, the review of our fund balance or cash reserves. We will also discuss the wastewater system's use of funds, and then ultimately, we'll be requesting direction from you on how to use the wastewater systems' funds for the upcoming fiscal year. So some wastewater system facts. The wastewater utility is operated as an enterprise fund, which is essentially a separate business unit of the city. The sources of the revenue for the wastewater system are wastewater charges and sewer investment fees. Wastewater charges are billed monthly to users of the system, and sewer investment fees are charged upon connecting to the sewer system. The wastewater system currently serves 10,415 customers, of which most are residential customers and of which most are inside-city limit customers. The system is experiencing an annual customer growth rate of 3%, which is about 300 customers, and based on that current customer growth, the system's annual recurring revenue growth rate is about 1.8%, or an annual recurring revenue amount of about $160,000. Since fiscal year 17, the average annual CIP has ranged anywhere from $4 to $8 million and has addressed expansion, renewal, and extension projects. The system has an annual WIFA debt payment of $3.2 million through fiscal year '28, and then that is when the Hilltop Plant debt is paid off, and then we have two more years left on the downtown treatment plant's debt. Now, due to debt covenants, prepayment cannot be made until fiscal year '24. The wastewater system has an operations fund, a capital renewal fund, and a projects or expansion fund. Those three funds fund operations and maintenance, our debt service, and any sort of projects. So looking at our rates, our rate structure and the history, as I said, we have wastewater user fees, which is comprised of a fixed rate, and then usage rates. We also have sewer investment fees, which, as I said, are upon connecting to the system. Those are one-time fees, and those are $91 per drainage fixture unit. We also have winter quarter averaging that we provide to all of our residential customers and a handful of our commercial customers. So the table below on the slide that you're looking at gives a little bit of an example of several different classifications, as well as the rate history since 2009. And so you'll see in 2009, our fixed rate for all users was $9.49, and it is currently $27.80. And then depending the type of, depending on the type of user that you are, depends on the type of usage rate that you pay. So back in February of 2009, a residential user was paying $1.93 per thousand gallons of water that was going through their meter. Today, they pay $5.66 per thousand gallons of water that goes through their meter. That's almost a 300% increase since 2009. Rates have not changed since 2013. We did a restructure in 2015, but the dollar amount was the same. So they have not changed since January of 2013. Excuse me. So looking at our wastewater customers since 2008. In 2008, we had 8,878 customers. The bar graph shows the blue color or the green color are residential customers, the orange color are commercial customers. In February of 2018, our total customers were 10,415. Most of that growth happened over, has happened over the last three years, so '15, '16, '17, and then currently into fiscal year '18. Prior to that, it was well below 2%. Another component of looking at the use of funds is looking at our wastewater financial condition and of course, looking at our total revenues. Now, these are the revenues that are being proposed in our fiscal year '19 recommended budget. And as I said earlier, we've got annual recurring revenues of about $160,000 per year. So when we add that year-over-year, by fiscal year '23, we'll be at about $10.2 million in annual revenues for the wastewater system. And then looking at the use of funds as proposed in our fiscal year '19 recommended budget. This is how we use our revenues and our cash reserves currently. So the bottom portion of those bar graphs, that color, happens to be our operating expenditures. Those range anywhere from $3.2 million to $3.5 million. And then we have our outgoing transfers. And then our debt service, which as you'll see, is basically the same as what our operating expenditures are year-over-year. The next color, that yellow color, is what we are recommending to fund in capital improvements for the next five years. And then the gray color, or the brown-gray color, is our ending fund balance through fiscal year '23. So to give you an idea of how we currently use the funds and what is being proposed in the fiscal year '19 recommended budget. So our five-year capital improvement plan, looking at that, and, well, looking at how we are using the funds, there's a very large portion of our funds being dedicated to our five-year capital improvement plan. The total five-year capital improvement plan is about $40.8 million. You do have a worksheet in your agenda packet that lists every single project that is in the five-year capital improvement plan that's being recommended. And those projects are broken down by types of projects, meaning renewal, expansion, extension, and then some other projects. Most of those projects are either renewal projects or expansion projects. Now, of the $40.8 million, we are only able to fund over the next five years 56% of those projects. So when you look at that worksheet that you have in front of you, there are about six projects that are highlighted in pink or red. Those are the six projects that are not funded in the five-year capital improvement program, and most of those are expansion projects at this time. So the funded projects for the five-year capital improvement plan that is, for the funded five-year capital improvement plan are primarily renewal projects and extension And of course, the last component in looking at the use of funds is we always have to take into consideration what our debt service is and what we're required to pay on that, which is $3.23 million a year. We currently have $30 million outstanding, and as I said earlier, in 2028 is when our Hilltop Treatment Plant will be paid in full, and in 2030 is when the downtown plant will be full, be paid in full. Are there any questions? So before I get to some scenarios, are there any questions on the capital improvements plan or any of the information that I have provided thus far? No? Okay, great. So with any time that we're looking at the use of funds, we want to look at some different scenarios. And as I said earlier, we are recommending funding a five-year capital improvement program that's just under $23 million. And with that, that means rates remain unchanged, and it also means that we don't put anything in our cash reserves to prepay our debt service in fiscal year '24. It means we're funding everything that we feel we can fund in our capital improvement projects. And so although there are a lot of numbers on this screen, I tried to just highlight with arrows the important lines that we want to look at that will help us evaluate what we want to do with those use of funds. So we always have our net income figure, and that basically is our discretionary money at the end of the year that we can either put into cash reserves, fund capital projects, use towards setting aside for debt prepayment down the road, basically the discretionary money we have left over. Then we have our debt service coverage ratio, which is very, very important when we look at these scenarios. And that's because WIFA requires us to maintain a 1.50 debt service coverage ratio. We cannot go below that, and we certainly don't want to come too close to that either. And as you see, in the recommended budget, we are fine. We are anywhere from 1.69 to 1.84. The third arrow is our CIP program, what we're currently funding for the CIP program or what's being recommended, which is just under $23 million for the next five years. And then that last arrow is our ending fund balance or cash reserves at the end of the year. So this is what is being recommended currently. So what are some other options? Well, we know that a rate reduction is an option. And so when we look at this particular scenario, I've projected out for a few years, we can do a $3 per month, per customer rate reduction, and then going in, and then eventually in fiscal year '23, getting to about a $6 per month rate reduction. You'll see that that second arrow, which is the important debt service coverage ratio arrow, you'll see in a couple of those years, we get close to that 1.50. And that's important to point out because what that says is that we really cannot provide more of a rate reduction than what is proposed in this particular slide. Even though we may have discretionary money left over at the end, we cannot provide that based on that debt service coverage ratio. Then what that does is anything that we're going to fund other than CIP means that we're going to have to reduce our five-year CIP. So what I've done is said that, all right, we can fund about $17.5 million in projects over the next five years, and that leaves us with about just over $10 million to move into fiscal year '24. So there's that option as well. We also have a debt prepayment option. Now, again, we cannot do, we cannot prepay any of the debt until fiscal year '24. However, it is a huge drain on the system, our debt payment, and that is the only way that we are going to be able to provide any sort of significant rate reduction, is to get rid of that expense out of, out of our wastewater system. So assuming that instead, we're going to reduce our CIP funding, but set the money that we are not spending on CIP aside, and saving it for fiscal year '24, to where we completely pay off the Hilltop Wastewater Treatment Plant, what does that look like then in fiscal year '25? Well, what we're able to do at that point is we are able to provide about a $10 to $11 a month rate reduction to all of the customers. Now, again, we're reducing our five-year CIP funding over those years, but we are able to prepay our debt, a very big drain on the system. So there's another option. And then the very last option is a combination of all of them. We're going to reduce our five-year CIP funding, we're going to provide a slight rate reduction of $3 per month over the next five, six, seven years, and we're going to prepay some of the debt, not all of it, but a portion of it, which frees up, again, that big debt payment. Now, we only will have like a $2.2 million debt payment instead of a 3.2. So it frees up some of that cash to where we're able to give about an $8 per month rate reduction in fiscal year '25. So those are some of the scenarios that I ran to give you an idea of what the system will look like based on what might be decided this evening. So in summary, the wastewater user rates have increased almost 300% since 2009, and they've remained unchanged since January of 2013. And although the wastewater system's customer base is increasing annually by 3%, debt covenants restrict the amount that can be considered for a rate reduction. The proposed five-year CIP includes expansion, renewal, and extension projects, of which only 56% of them will be able to be funded. And any consideration of a rate reduction or a debt prepayment, or a combination of either of those, will reduce the five-year CIP funding. So this information was presented to the Municipal Utilities Commission in March and April, and they had some comments and then a final recommendation as well. And their comments were that, yes, they recognize that the rates are high. They also said that debt prepayment is a consideration for the use of funds, but setting aside funds for debt prepayment reduces funding for the five-year, for the CIP going forward. And WIFA doesn't allow another prepayment until fiscal year '24. And by not funding the CIP, the wastewater system won't be able to extend as needed, expand when needed, or fund necessary repair and improvement projects in the future. And Mayor Gates was actually at both of those meetings, and do you have any other comments that they might have made that I did not capture?
I think you did an excellent job of capturing it. I will say that they were adamant in their decision, and they recognized that through growth, that the reason for the recommendation was that growth will take care of those concerns. They didn't think that banking the money to pay down the debt in 2024 was a good use of funds, and there was definitely the strong sense that we need to address the inevitable growth that is coming by. So no, I think you did a really good job of capturing what was discussed.
Okay.
And thank you for all of the hard work you and staff put into this, going through priority lists, explaining the situation, so that they made, I feel, a very informed recommendation.
Great, thank you very much. So Muk's recommendation, as mayor stated, was to continue to fund the five-year CIP as what's been recommended in the fiscal year '19 budget, and leave rates unchanged and not dedicate any additional monies towards debt prepayment in the future. So the next steps would be then, direction on how to use those funds. Do we want to continue to fund the five-year CIP as what was presented to you last week? Or do you want to do a combination of some of those other options, reducing rates, setting money aside for the debt prepayment, any of those sorts of items? We are open ears.
Well, I will tell you personally, sitting through those meetings actually changed my mind. I had been in support of rate reduction, but $3 a month is really such a nominal amount that I'm not sure it's the solution to the bigger picture. So that's where I'm at with that.
Tina, is it correct that option four is the commission recommendation?
That's correct.
I've got a question for Manager Bacon. You know, the one sheet on the five-year capital improvement plan, that looks excellent. Thank you for that. A question on the Devlin Avenue sewer line project. As I understand it, that's a pretty major extension project, and in cooperation with the county, are we actually, when that project is done, and if we have a septic in that area that fails, those individuals are going to be required to tie in to the system? And do we have any projections on what that might look like in five years?
I think the other part about Devlin is that the county anticipates there will be customers added.
Right, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah.
That has an impact on what we're doing here, so.
I don't believe in any substantive way.
No?
No. Rob is here, he might have a different.
Has there been discussions, Rob, on maybe how many customers may come into the system from that project?
I actually knew that number once, but tonight isn't tonight that I remember.
Yeah, I don't remember it either, so.
Mayor, members of council, yes, we've had discussions with the county on that project, and I believe it was around 80 customers could connect once that project is complete.
Which is the basis for my comment.
So only 80? Okay.
For the first phase. There would be further phases that would continue to the west.
Okay. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
I would just like to say that I would also go with the municipal utility commission's recommendation, only because the theme of the budget work session was that we have not invested enough in infrastructure over the years. The, all of the systems seem to be at a certain point where it really does need an investment, and this seems to be the only way to go about keeping the investment in the wastewater system. So I would, I would agree with their recommendation.
Thank you. Come on.
I'd just like to echo the same sentiment.
I would also agree that we need to continue to invest in capital improvements.
Councilmember Wade, you have a comment?
Yes, yeah, thank you. I would agree also. I think that when we're looking at this in the long term, you know, and kind of echoing the sentiment of the mayor, you know, $3 per month seems minimal, especially when compared to the savings that will be provided in the long term. So I do agree that we need to fund capital improvements and invest in our future.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for that presentation. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number two, which is airport update and draft of airport advisory commission ordinance. Mr. Bacon?
Thank you, Mayor Gates, members of council. Two weeks ago tomorrow, the city of Kingman regained operational control of the airport, and a lot of people have been busy in the last two weeks, not just city staff, but folks who live and, or have businesses at the airport and who have an interest in what goes on there. I think I've shared with you and the media, the highlights of what's happened in the last two weeks. And so I just briefly say that if you drive out there today, hopefully, you'll notice an airport that looks different than it did two weeks ago. We're actively working with the FAA to have the Part 139 qualification met again, which is the ability for that airport to provide commercial service. And we have a complete staff onboard, starting with the airport general manager, the interim one, Joe Husband, who I think most of you had a chance to meet. Our counterpart on the industrial park side, Bill DiGiulio, and then the maintenance staff in the receptionist position, if you will, that were part of the old KAA, have been brought on as city employees and have begun their probationary periods with the city. The other thing that's before us tonight is the matter of an airport advisory commission, something that we've talked about for most of the time that I've been here. And this is modeled after the Transit Advisory Commission. It's intended to be a seven-member commission, plus a council liaison, plus a staff liaison. The staff liaison, I can tell you, will be Gary Kellogg, the economic development director. The staff, or the council liaison is obviously up to the seven of you. And then we get into the composition of the commission itself. I took an opportunity over the last couple of months that we were talking about this to look at what other cities in Arizona did who had municipal airports and how they structured their commission. And the ones that really got my attention were the ones who divided the membership between pilots and non-pilots, rather than just say there's a seven-member commission. And so I said, I like that idea. I think it's consistent with the feedback that I received from members of the user group about wanting to have people on the commission with an interest and experience in the aviation industry. And so that's how this is crafted. And one of the key sentences in the draft that's before you says, "At least three members shall be citizens-at-large who are non-pilots." You know, I actually, when I put that in, my head had it in the reverse, which meant, that meant that four could be pilots. Right? So I wanted to call that to your attention. The other thing which is unusual in this draft for most of the city commissions that you have, is that it anticipates that there will be people on this commission who are not members of the Kingman City proper, they're not qualified electors, it's a term of art that Carl uses. And so that's to reflect the fact that this airport, A, currently is in the county, and B, the people who need and want the services of Kingman Airport aren't all city residents. And so that's, that's why there's a provision in this draft for a, a non-resident, it's, as a member of the commission. The duties of the commission, I think, are pretty straightforward. Again, they've been put together drawing from what other municipal airport advisory commissions use, and feedback that I received from members of the user group. It's not perfect, perfectly aligned with what the user group said, but I think it substantively meets the concerns. The last thing that I would want to talk about is a process question, which will be in the hands of the seven of you, the city clerk, and Mr. Fogg. And that is, I envision that you're able to come to some agreement tonight on a draft of this commission, so that you can consider it at your June 5th meeting. If that's true, then what I would hope that the city clerk does is start taking applications tomorrow through the next, I think there's actually three weeks between now and your next meeting, so that you can, on the same night, not only officially create the commission, but you can name the people who are going to serve on that commission. I think it's important to get going with that. This Friday, the interim airport general manager's going to have a meeting with the user group, and that'll continue in the next couple of weeks, based on their mutually agreed-upon schedule. But the intention, I think, from everybody's part, the council's part, my part, the users' group, is that pretty quickly, the council moves to formally create the airport advisory commission. So that's the process point.
Can I ask a question, please? I'm talking specifically about non-pilot candidates.
Yep.
In a perfect situation, what would that ideal applicant look like? What would that skill set be?
Actually, there might be a business owner at an industrial park and not fly. They just happen to be, have their business located at the air industrial park. That, I mean, that's been one of the themes about the air park for, I call it the air park, I know that's technically probably not its name, but it's, as long as I've been here and before, frankly, one of the themes is that's a premier site for businesses, manufacturing businesses to locate. And so if there's somebody out there who's interested in the operation of the airport doesn't happen to fly, they ought to have a voice. That's, that's the premise of the draft, is that they ought to have a voice in this commission.
Thank you. Other questions of staff?
I have a quick question. You mentioned, when presenting this, that, I mean, I guess I wasn't clear as to what you were referring to, but you mentioned that the provision that requires at least three members to be non-pilots, did you mean to put that the four remaining members, did you instead mean to put that the four remaining members were to be pilots, or, or did you mean what you put in there?
I chose the language so that there were at least three non-pilot members, but when I was thinking about crafting it, and what I see when I read that language, is that there are three non-pilot members and four pilot members. That's what I.
So would your recommendation be to change the language to say that four members shall be citizens-at-large who are pilots and three citizens-at-large who are non-pilots?
No, my, my recommendation is the language that you've got before you. What I'm doing is explaining what I see when I read that language. I've had, I ran that draft by some people, they said, oh, so then pilots are going to be the minority on the commission? I said, that's not what that says. And so we've, we had some staff-level conversations about how to write that language. So I, all I'm trying to say is, when I see, when I envision this commission, I see you having somebody from outside the city on it, and I see four of them be pilots and three of them not be, but in the event that you have a application mix that won't let you do that, this lets you fill the commission and go forward. Just as a parenthetical, we're having a really challenging time getting enough applications to bring the Economic Development Advisory Commission appointees to you. And one of the things that's suggested is that the reason for that is that we set categories. You'll remember. You'll remember that, there were, you know, one from here and one from there. And so I'm not sure I agree with that. That might just be a case of needing to do better marketing, right? But I wanted not to have that raised as a possibility on the advisory commission for the airport. I wanted to keep it as general as possible. So like, here's a way to think about it. I've read some cities enabling ordinances on airport commissions where they named, there'll be somebody with finance background, there'll be somebody with, you get to pick. They start naming the backgrounds. I don't think that's necessary at all for us. And so I just, to me, the split that made eminent sense was pilot, non-pilot. And I expect that a majority will be pilots.
Hypothetically, the way that it is drafted, you could technically have all members be non-pilots. Is that correct?
Correct. That part's true.
I understand the motivation here in the language, and am all for diversity and not wanting to see any one demographic or group perhaps overrepresented, I think is the motivation here. However, I have concerns about the prospect of ineffectualizing this commission by excluding. And when you have a maximum, the way it's drafted currently, of four pilots, it sounds like three must be non-pilots. If you already have four pilots and you have, suppose hypothetically, you have a vacancy, you have additional, an additional person come along with an otherwise vested interest in the airport or its management, a leasing or a lease or of the, at the industrial park, but they happen to be a pilot, with three needing to be non-pilots, that additional, you know, commissioner could be, it sounds to me, like disqualified, or they would be barred from serving because there are already four pilots on the commission. And I'm not comfortable with, I mean, we don't, we don't disqualify people for, I don't know, serving on other commissions because they are qualified in other manners for serving on other commissions. So I have a concern about saying, just because you're a pilot, you can't serve if we already have four.
So I have two reactions to that. Councilmember Yocum. The first is that, based on what I heard you say, you could address that by flipping that language. So where it says, "At least three are non-pilots," to be, "At least three are pilots," right? And then the second, the second thought that I have is that what one of the basic motivations was in crafting this draft was to get balance. I mean, you heard that exactly right. And so that's, that's why you guys get to make the judgment calls about where that balance is to be found. But I, but I would not back away from the suggestion that part of the idea behind this draft was to get balance between all the folks who have an interest in that airport, pilot, non-pilot, on the park, in the community. I mean, I was trying to get it as diverse as we could and still make sure we had minimum representation. Mayor, I think you've got questions on either side of you.
Yes, we do.
So I'd like to see this written as a requirement of four pilots or aviation business owners out at our airport, and then leave the other three non-designated and up to a majority of council to decide how we would like to see that mix as we move forward. That way, we can guarantee that we'll have four people who are actually affected by how the airport's doing. So they're either, they either are a pilot and have a plane out there, or they have an aviation business out there. And then the other three spots would be open. We could find that balance. And as we move forward, as we're working through this, we can determine how that balance would look like.
So the suggestion is that the line that says, "At least three members shall be citizens-at-large who are non-pilots," would be changed to say, "At least four members shall be pilots." Is that?
Or, or they own an aviation business.
I like that option. I know Councilmember Lincolnfelter had a comment as well, her question.
Councilmember Lincolnfelter.
Yeah, thank you. You know, there's really, there's really two groups that I think need to be represented. Primarily, there needs to be airport stakeholders. And they're also, it's also, it's a community resource, it's all of ours. So there needs to be some representation there as well. I don't really see the correlation between, I guess I kind of see it, but pilot versus non-pilot. I'd like to reframe it a little bit to airport stakeholder, and then somebody else, other people that may be community resources. So the airport stakeholders, rather than gauging them on whether they're a pilot or not, they would be an aviation tenant, they would be operating and leasing premises on the airport for either private enjoyment or commercial gain. And then the community resource, you know, maybe somebody that's, has some expertise or some knowledge in government regulations like federal aviation, administration grant assurances, compliance, those types of things. But, but really, the people that have the skin in the game and some, some knowledge base to bring to the table. I think we kind of did that with the Water Sustainability Committee, that was a committee. I don't know how we got away from the residency requirement on that because we didn't talk about it, but.
So what you just identified is very similar to a suggestion that airport users representatives made to me a month, month and a half ago. And they were identifying it by business type. So for instance, an aircraft services business, hangar tenants, you know what I'm saying? To get, so they were getting the category. The difference between that and what I drafted and what Councilmember Staley suggested is it doesn't take you to a requirement to that level. It leaves it open for the council to choose among the applicants how those people serve the interest that you're talking about. And so I don't see what, after thinking about this for six, eight weeks, and the experience we've had in appointing other citizen boards, I just, I think you can get to the perspective of Councilmember Lincolnfelter by using Councilmember Staley's language, if that makes any sense to you.
Yeah. I think the people that probably have been working out there for a long, long time, you know, they're out there every day, and they know the aviation industry, which is, I think, who we want primarily. We want people that are familiar with that and that their livelihoods are sort of tied to how we do here.
Not disagreeing with that, not disagreeing with that concept at all. I'm trying to incorporate that in concept, in fact, into the draft. The only thing that's different is, well, there are two things. One is to get the assurance that a majority of this commission is going to be those kinds of folks. That's, that's what the four does. And the second is the level of specificity you want to use to make sure you're getting those people. Councilmember Staley, with my last chance to put words in her mouth on this topic, I'll have other chances later tonight. But she's saying that, that she thinks that the council, in the review of the applicants, can get to the same place as what you just said without naming those categories. And frankly, based on recent experience in this city, that makes sense to me. Doesn't, doesn't deny what you're saying is being true, it just says that her language is a better way to get there.
The only other thing that I would want to address is the residency requirement. I think just starting off about, that might be problematic. So I know a lot of, you mentioned that the asset itself right now, I know we're looking at annexation of that down the road. But that's not in the city right now, and I don't know how many of the people that would be interested are actually city residents. There are certainly regional residents.
A large concern of mine as well.
Okay, so let me address that real briefly. The fact that there's a non-resident provision in there should tell you that I am sympathetic to the point that both of you just made. My hesitancy was about how far into the list of seven the non-resident provision, if you will, should extend because it is, after all, a municipal facility, right? And so, I mean, take an example from any one of the other commissions we have. And you know, if you had two, three, four people on that commission who are non-residents, I mean, it'd be reasonable to say, so why are we doing that? And, and so my suggested draft airs on the cautious side that says, we ought to have them. We ought to be willing to have them. And let's start with one, and then we, and then we can see. I mean, we, I won't be here to see it, but the seven of you will be able to make a judgment about that. I don't, the only place where I would, I would start getting concerned about the number is if it gets frankly beyond two. I could do one or two pretty comfortably and say it's still a municipal commission. Gets to three, maybe, maybe not, and four, certainly not. And so I don't know if you've got a number in mind beyond the one that's in the draft, but I, that's, that's how my head worked on getting to non-resident.
I have information from Carl.
And I would just point out that per our city ordinances, we do have allowances for non-residents. It would be two in this commission. We would just need to add this commission to that list, which is easy enough to do. But you can easily make that, make that movement to.
Mr. Cooper, I think on Planning and Zoning Commission, there is an allowance for non-residential with a supermajority vote by council.
Planning and zoning, none. Because planning and zoning is controlled, it controls specifically city limits.
That's right, it was changed a few years ago, I remember that.
Yeah, we had that issue.
I remember. But how about if we could, we could add that same type of language to this draft? If it's more than one non-city resident, it could be approved by a supermajority, but up to only a certain number, which I think, Mr. Bacon, you just said two, which I'd agree with.
Yeah, so, so you could do it that way. Or what's, I think, being suggested by Councilmembers Yocum and Lincolnfelter, and that's my turn to put words in their mouth, is, is that the draft be modified to say two instead of one. Because that's consistent with your.
That would be easier than a supermajority person because then we just always have to keep bouncing back between the rules for whatever. But whatever the council wants, I'll draft, so.
Sure. Yeah, not to push back, but I think if we, if we limit it, I fear that we may not have enough, enough people that are airport stakeholders that are, that are going to be qualified. And so I have a question, and I don't want to get too off the topic, but for the water sustainability, that was a working committee. And we said that that was going to be a working committee because it was of regional importance, not just city importance. I would argue that the airport is also of regional importance. So is there a way, and we didn't talk about the residency requirement with that, with that working committee. That was just.
Committee versus a commission, Councilmember, that's one of the reasons we didn't.
Right. So I'm asking, is, is a commission the best vehicle for this? Or would a working committee for the airport be a better solution?
I don't know if I can answer that.
Well, I, the way I've understood this from January, when we first talked about airport management, is it was, it was going to be modeled after Transit Advisory. Transit Advisory is a commission, is, to me, it's a commission. That's your question, that's what I thought your question was, Travis, I'm sorry.
I understand that and appreciate that. However, I'm, I have concerns about the residency requirements as well. I'm concerned that, and staff just pointed out, that we're having difficulty, as it is, populating the Economic Development Commission because of receiving too few applications or because of, you know, we're disqualifying essentially 20,000 residents who are otherwise within the area but happen to live just outside the city limits because the city's footprint is as small as it is.
Okay, so there have been two suggestions offered about addressing the draft that's before you that has one. The first one is to amend that draft so that it says two, which is consistent with existing policy on commissions like this. The other one is Councilmember Kress's suggestion that the language have essentially a minimum on it, you pick, one or two, and then additional language that gives the council by some supermajority. Is it five or six, Carl? I don't know.
Supermajority is five.
By at least five of you to increase that number beyond two.
If I could suggest a third option. And I know that we all have, you know, annexation is looming in the horizon and, you know, there's that possibility that the airport gets annexed, obviously hasn't been voted on yet, and we don't really.
If the next step in that annexation, we're voting on it, I'd be a happy guy.
Right, so we don't know how close that is. I would be more in favor of drafting something that's less restrictive at this time because, you know, later on down the road, if we wanted to be more restrictive and limit it to city residents, we could always make that, that change going forward. And especially after the airport is annexed, in the event that it actually is. Vicky Kress's suggestion appears less restrictive, at least to the extent that the council has the option of including more people.
I absolutely agree with Councilmember Wade.
And then, so my third suggestion that we could consider is restrict it to county residents rather than city, at least for now, just an option. Is there a issue with that?
Did we just go from two to seven?
I'm just, huh? I'm sorry, Mayor.
Did we just go from two to seven? I'm not, I'm not sure I'm clear.
No, 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 we went to, the idea of county residents is just top of mind, would allow us to consider people from Bullhead, Lake Havasu City, and elsewhere in Mojave County. I just, I just think that's, that's pretty inconsistent with the idea that we're, that was advanced in this draft, which is an area of impact, an area of service, if you will. And I guess somebody could try to convince me that Havasu and Bullhead are in that area, but they'd be talking for a long time to get me there. So I, either one or the other, you know, what I heard you say frankly, of the three, would tell me that you would prefer Councilmember Kress's suggestion about at least five.
That's correct, yes.
City clerk had a comment?
On that, that's consistent with, what Mr. Bacon said is consistent with all of our other commissions as well. The county residents that are able to serve on our commissions have to be from the greater Kingman area. That way, we don't have somebody from Lake Havasu trying to come up here and run the show in Kingman.
Councilmember Lincolnfelter?
Thank you. I appreciate the dialogue on this, this is an important topic.
It is.
So I'm glad we're taking our time to vet it. As long as we get the best experience and expertise and education, that's where, that's what we really need out there. I don't want us to get hung up on process, over result and outcome that we want to get to. Which is why I thought, you know, something along a committee or something that would allow us to look at expertise beyond, beyond residency.
And just if I, we define greater Kingman area as Kingman, Golden Valley, you know, basically we had an address that says Kingman. So anything out in that general area covers it. But we can write whatever you guys want.
So here's what I think, so here's what I think it is that you've suggested to us.
Right. Right.
And, um, this is a more important than a usual night, because Carl's the one who has to do the work. Okay? Um, not that he doesn't do the work all the time, but, uh, the first is that the language that says at least three members shall be citizens who are non-pilots, says at least four members shall be citizens at large who are pilots. Thing number one. Thing number two, this is, you tell me if I heard this right. The second one, the next line says, two members may be a non-resident of the city, um, but must reside for at least one year. Okay? In addition, or additional members who are non-residents may be appointed with at least five affirmative votes of the city council.
Uh, Mr. Bacon, I would only add, uh, what the city clerk has already mentioned about the greater Kingman area.
Um, yeah. Yeah, we'll get, Carl will get that. Thank you, Councilmember Kress.
I'm comfortable with that.
Uh, Councilmember Yocum looks like he has a question or a comment, mayor's side.
There would be no stipulation then in such a prospective draft about the minimum number of people who actually reside within the city limits, just as long as the council or, or a supermajority of the council agrees to appoint such commissioners.
Says you get, the way that I just fed it back, based on what I heard, Councilmember Yocum, the language will say you get at least two, and you can have more than two with a, a five-plus vote of the city council. That's the way Carl will draft it.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
As long as that, as long as that satisfies, you know, statute and, or is acceptable in the eyes of the, eyes of the law and.
Yeah, that'd fall within.
City code.
We're writing the city code the way we want it to comply, so if we want to make that limit exceed, that's fine, we can do that. I just want to make sure that, that at least four members are pilots or own aviation businesses. I think that was the language that Jamie used.
Good, good edit. I, I'd miss that. Thank you.
Less restrictive.
But does that make everybody happy? Okay, I'll have that at the next meeting.
And so, it would, my last thought on this is that, um, Carl gets that done this week and circulates it to you as a draft, so that you can comment back to him, so that when you see it on the fifth of June, it's clear what you're looking at and what you're voting on to create it. And between now and then, the city clerk will start the advertisement and application collection process for this commission, so potentially you can do both of those things on the fifth of June. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item three, White Cliffs Wagon Trail.
Uh, mayor members, council, we have a two-part presentation for you this evening, evening. Ryan Ackerman with Colorado River Area Trails Association will be here to talk about the benefits of trail development, following which I'll have a very brief update on the White Cliffs Wagon Trail project. So with that, Ryan, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, they're coming up, and we just talked about a, a major asset the city has in the airport. If you haven't had a chance to get out and take a look at this part of the city, I would encourage you to do that, because this is a real gem for any community, and, and definitely for ours. Uh, and, uh, this is hopefully one installment in a series on trails in the city, so, go ahead.
Thank you, council, for taking the time to listen to us tonight. Um, my name's Ryan. I help run the Colorado River Area Trail Alliance. Uh, we are IMBA Association Chapter affiliated, 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We work closely with, um, BLM, the state. We want to work closely with you as well. Um, we have had over 1,000 hours volunteered annually, um, over the last few years. We, we put on an annual race every year within our group and members. We work hard collectively together to try to not only benefit what we love as far as mountain biking and the trails and being out in the open in nature and appreciating the beautiful landscape around us, but, uh, we see the economic benefits as well it brings to our community, and we take pride in that. So, right now, um, we've constructed over 38 miles of trail, um, just within our organization. That's not including other trails that Mojave County, um, area has, and parks, Mojave County Parks and, and other organizations have helped. Um, but enough about our organization. We'll go more into what matters here, which is, um, the economic development and the benefits. Um, with over 88 miles of trail constructed in the Kingman vicinity, that might sound like a lot to many people, um, that aren't trail users, but you don't want to use that same exact trail over and over. It gets old. Um, and some of these people who are enthusiasts that come from out of town, they don't, they, they want to stay the weekend. They want to spend their time here and enjoy. So, um, Prescott, Flagstaff, those communities have upwards of 300, 400 miles of trail system with, that are recognized within their communities. Um, we have over 80 miles of trail currently planned, um, between the county and what the city is proposing, you know, what we're proposing to the city now, um, what you guys are working on, and with BLM. Um, the Sun Corridor Trail is a big project that's been worked on for over 10, over the last 10 years at least. Um, and that's a through trail that's, uh, gonna run from the very, very bottom of Arizona all the way through basically the most beautiful portions of Arizona, um, dropping out towards, uh, Nevada. Um, right now, there's over 3,500 users annually documented by Bureau of Land Management at the Surbat Foothills Recreation Area, which otherwise is known as Monolith Gardens, for those of you who have been out there. Um, there's over 30 miles of trail system out there. Um, our organization helps maintain at no cost. It's just, you know, volunteer labor. Um, BLM works closely with us to fund new projects, then keep the area cleaned up and maintained. We've seen a drastic improvement in, um, trash and graffiti and things like that. The trail users and our organization as well, and other community organizations go out and help clean it up and make sure that they're taking pride and ownership in the, uh, landscape that we use. Um, approximately over 5,000 users annually throughout Mojave County parks owned and managed trails, so including the Wallapies and some of the other Mojave County, uh, parks and recreation trails. So trails are important be, for many reasons. Um, the health and wellness benefits, I mean, yes, the economic impact is huge. That's what we're all here for, you know, at the end of the day, that's why, you know, but the health and wellness and the sense of ownership and pride of our community and its landscape is something that's worth investing in. Um, there's a lot of physical and mental health benefits, um, which we desperately need in our area. We need, you know, more recreation and things for families to get out and, and exercise their, not only their physical being, but their mental being as well. And it's been proven over and over to, you know, helping families, men come together and help those who struggle with problems to relieve stress and get things off their back. Um, as far as economic development, recreational tourism is at all-time high right now. Um, I don't know if you've noticed, but there's REI stores popping up everywhere. There's, even Walmart's getting really into the branding of outdoor equipment and things. Um, and we need to be on the forefront of that. As far as economic development, um, there's lots of future opportunities as well with our area, as far as creating, uh, quality of life for the people and residents that are our future, as far as children. Um, with the proposed White Cliffs Trail, um, area, it would be amazing to see a nature trail go through there with educational placards, um, kind of, you know, speaking of our local geology, the history of that wagon trail, and our local vegetation. And that's, you know, you're breeding and bringing up a sense of ownership and pride of your beautiful local area with children. It's opportunity for schools and teachers to get out of the classroom and take a breath of fresh air and get their kids excited about education and learning about their local area. Um, quality of life, um, you know, aside from that, the cultural and health, uh, wellness, uh, programs, business and professional recruitment, a lot of people who, you know, are high, high-tiered jobs, you know, doctors and lawyers and things like that, they, they need something, they need, they're usually very active people outside of work, and they need something to shut off stress. And if they don't have anywhere to kind of get away from work and relieve, you know, their, their stress in their mind, um, it's not a place they want to be. That's why, you know, you see Flagstaff thrive with great doctors and lawyers in some of our surrounding communities, because they have a better quality of life there outside of just work. Um, one of the big assets we have that we also could capitalize on is we have year-round weather, unlike Flagstaff or Prescott, or some even, you know, some of the other places that are too hot nearby, um, even Lake Havasu. It gets to the point where the weather is too harsh and crucial to really get out and enjoy those outdoor activities and sports. Um, in Kingman, you, we have pretty mild climate, so high desert mild climate that these things can be capitalized throughout the year. I know myself, I have come across many people from Flagstaff and Prescott during the winter time while I'm out on the trail, and I ask them, you know, what they're doing here, and they, they're here because they, they don't have the opportunity like we do to ride year-round. Um, and to me, I see the impact of economic development. I always explain the downtown area to them, and all the awesome businesses that we have that they could capitalize on. These people want, you know, they're burning lots of calories. They're gonna go eat in our, you know, local places. They're gonna stay in our hotel rooms if there's enough trails for them to ride, and, you know, things that spark their interest. Um, so as far as trail economics, a 2017 Outdoor Industry Association study, um, came up with 184 billion on outdoor recreational products alone, 702.3 billion on outdoor recreational trips. Um, speaking of that, that gives opportunity for new businesses to arise in our community and young entrepreneurs to bring in people from outside of our area to show them the beauty and make money. And, um, estimated spending on trail-related outdoor recreation is 25 billion a year on gear and 176 billion on trips. Those are astronomical numbers for somebody who's not into the outdoor industry. You wouldn't think that that, that has that big of an impact, but it does. Uh, supports, it supports 1.7 million jobs, 60.7 in wages, 60.7 in wages, and 13 billion in state local tax revenue. Um, to the right here is a chart that shows the impact of non-motorized trail activity from 2015, and the trail users and how popular it is. And that's just a, a Arizona state trail impact. Um, biconics, um, we were able to pull up a very similar poverty-stricken community that was really on the forefront of building their community up to something better, um, just as we have seen Kingman do, um, which was Gallup, New Mexico. They had a 10-year economic impact study. Um, it's a very comparable location to Arizona with the I-40, I-40 corridor, um, natural recreation and resource tourism destination. Um, it was ranked as one of the poorest counties in the U.S. 80% surrounded by federal, 80% of the land was surrounded by federal and state trust land, which are also things that we have to come, overcome and fight to get some of these trails to work correctly. Um, Adventure Gallup and Beyond, um, Initiative Development created 2.5 million bond passed by the city, 150 miles of trail built. Gallup now attracts 32,000 adventure tourists annually. They hold three biking events annually, not to mention probably the trail running and other, uh, non-motorized trail use, um, events that they have going on. Just those three biking events create over 1 million in revenue a year. Um, estimated 25 million in economic impact over the 10 years. Um, what does success look like? Overall, what we, we have lots of trails on the outside and outskirts of Kingman. Our goal is to draw people into Kingman. I can't tell you how many people I have seen that come to ride or trail run Monolith Gardens and, that are from the Vegas area, and they turn right back around and they go back to Vegas, because they're not, they, they haven't had the opportunity or they don't know, because they haven't driven through downtown Kingman and seen the beautiful preservation of our historic buildings and all the new businesses popping up, as well as uptown Kingman. Um, it's very important to, to put together, um, a, a trail system that links and connects to each other, that are cohesive within each other. That way, they can really experience the full scope in our, our city. Basically, you know, when they're doing that, they're gonna stay there, they're gonna eat here, they're gonna spend their money here, which is a huge, huge opportunity that we're missing right now with our surrounding trail areas. Uh, we, with White Cliffs being proposed, we're not only preserving historic value, we're not only investing in our future in education for children that may be taking your seat someday, um, we're also keeping it clean, and we're also creating more revenue for the city. Um, and I think the return on investment is astronomical in comparison to what it takes to maintain and, and, uh, create basically for the upfront cost, and what it takes to maintain these trails on the back end. There's little to no maintenance. These are things that, projects that nonprofit organizations such as ourself can attend to, as well as possibilities of inmates going out and working the, the trails and keeping them landscaped. And it keeps a presence to keep the graffiti and trash out and preserve the beautiful area that we have right here in the middle of Kingman. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Do you have, um, I saw one, a recent slide, it said, trail and support facilities will require maintenance. Has your organization or staff kind of looked at what that number might look like?
It varies. That would, that would depend on how far we wanted to go. My perspective, my, my sight is to see lower White Cliffs, where the trail is already existing, to be cleaned up and landscaped with, you know, local vegetation and placards, such as I said, maybe a small Ramada. Uh, we have not dug in deep into numbers as far as exactly how much it would cost, no. But, um, those are upfront minimal costs with, with, uh, little to no money on the back end to keep them maintained, so.
Well, thank you very much for bringing this to us this evening. Other questions?
I did have a, a question for clarification, but first I wanted to thank you for this presentation. It's eye-opening. I think, um, you know, a lot of us did not consider the financial impact that trails could have on a community like ours. Um, one thing that I, I, I just wanted to clarify is, um, in the, in the biconics slide about Gallup, New Mexico, um, you put the three biking events annually. Was that an estimated 1 million per year?
Yes.
And, and I, I wanted to, um, also plug in that I, I looked up, you know, the, the demographics of Gallup, New Mexico, and compared them with Kingman. Um, I think the population is around 22,000, um, at least in 2016, which means their community is actually smaller than ours, and they're bringing in a million dollars a year, um, at least, in just these biking events, which is, which is very impressive.
Yes, Prescott's been very successful as well. There's a town at Leadville in Colorado that solely exists from one mountain biking event, um, yearly that's where, that's their biggest impact of revenue. We hold the annual rattler race every year, which has upwards of 70, last year we had 156 participants, I believe. Um, but it's steadily been over the last four years over, uh, 75 participants. And if we could get something started in the middle of town to be able to link that to the outer areas, this is an endurance race that goes, you know, 30 miles through trail, single-track trail system. We could get the, the crowds of those people, you know, into the city and actually experience what Kingman has to offer and spend their money here locally, rather than coming to race and heading back home real quick.
Thank you. I, I have a question. I guess I want to direct us to the city manager. We just went through budget sessions. Is this Is this request, if it was the will of the council, something that could be dealt with, accommodated in this upcoming budget cycle?
Mayor Gates, the answer, that's yes. In fact, staff anticipates that at the end of tonight's work session, the council will ask that that be included in the preliminary budget and in the amount of 30,000.
Well, thank you.
I have a question for the speaker. First of all, congratulations on the grant. You guys just won a grant, right?
Yeah, we put in a grant for $30,000 with the state and we won a grant that's for maintenance, so it relieves, it's for the maintaining of the general Monolith Gardens or Surbat Foothills Recreation Area. For those who haven't been out there, it's basically Coyote Pass as you're headed towards Vegas. And it's, that grant specifically to maintain existing trail, which is something our organization does every weekend and so it'll free up some of our time to kind of focus on other areas.
Congratulations, that's a success. Did I also see something that you, that a new race is coming to town, that we just, the Kingman area just secured a new race? Is that...
The Mountain Bike Association of Arizona, we also applied for a grant with them. They do high-profile races that bring in hundreds, sometimes 300, 400 riders. And these are huge for economic development. These have huge economic impacts on the cities that they decide to hold these races in. We applied for a $1,000 maintenance grant on our trail system last fall and they awarded it and now want to come to Kingman to actually hold an enduro race, which there will be three of them throughout Arizona. And it's awesome to see Kingman as recognized as one of the beautiful places to hold that race.
So they're going to bring a race to Kingman?
Yes.
That's excellent.
The end of September, yes.
And how many people do you think that'll bring to town? Do you know?
As far as participants, I would say probably anywhere from 100 to a couple hundred. As far as people, these people bring their, that's another thing is, it's not just a rider who's coming to town, they're bringing their kids, they're bringing their families. They have to eat, they have, you know, some of these guys want to drink lots of beer afterwards, they want to hang out, they want to go see the, some of them go to the museums and see, travel around and adventure around to see these places they've never been, you know, these hidden gems like Kingman is, so.
That's great. Thank you.
Any other questions or the presenter?
First, I wanted to thank you for your presentation, Mr. Ackerman. Turn on my microphone, sorry. I was saying, thank you for your presentation, I appreciate you taking the time to be here tonight, share this information with the staff. And I want to also thank Crata or Crata or however you guys say it, for all of your, you're donating all your time to work on the trails and continuously rerouting and adding on so that there's more out there to ride. It really does add to the community and I know that's, it's hard work to be out there every weekend, so thank you very much for that. I think this is a really important topic and we did talk about it a bit in the budget session, but I'm glad that you guys can see the numbers of what trails can bring to your community. I think that Ryan did touch on it, but this isn't just about mountain bike trails, but these would be multi-use trails. It was my hope that White Cliffs would actually be open to, you know, ADA, it would be ADA-friendly so that even, it would be wheelchair accessible and anybody could use it. It was also my hope that it would connect uptown to downtown. And so there's a lot of opportunity here. Monolith Gardens is beautiful. The last time I was out there, a van pulled in with, I don't know, 15 bikes on top and they were coming from Vegas and they were, they were actually from France, they hooked up with a Vegas tour company and they came to Monolith Gardens because it is gorgeous out there. And White Cliffs is just as beautiful, we have other areas that are breathtaking. And so if we can commit to this, I think that we will really see it pay off and we'll have another reason for tourists to come to Kingman. It's not just for locals, it's for everybody. And so I hope, I hope to see the city really invest in this project and more.
City manager.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, I was sitting here watching the presentation and reflecting on the comments and added to my list of, hmm, should have done more on this subject in the last six months. One of the things that we've been trying to present in the last few study sessions or work sessions to the council is the basic idea that active recreation can be a really important part of an economic development strategy. I mean, you heard tonight, you're hearing tonight about one, which is mountain biking. That's really what was behind Mike Miersman's presentation today about soccer fields and there's a number of other things that as you're going through your economic development strategic plan, I would just encourage you to think about ways to take what most people think is quality of life amenities, hiking trails, biking trails, and realize their dual nature, that they're both a quality of life amenity for the people who live here, but they're an economic development driver if they're done well and marketed well. So I agree with the comments that have been made, thanking you for your presentation tonight. I know Rob and Josh are here, do you have anything to add to this besides what's your pleasure or would you?
Thank you for your time, council.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Rob.
Mayor, council, I just want to give a brief update on the grant application that we submitted. It was a combination maintenance project and new trail construction project. It was partially funded by Arizona State Parks. In order to complete the new trail construction that we had shown on that application, we would need approximately another $30,000. We have 13,700 budgeted and the awarded amount was 13,530. So in order to complete that new trail construction shown in that application, it would require $30,000 in next year's budget. So I can try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Did you have a question?
I've got a question for Josh, if he's in the audience, our tourism manager. Hey, Josh.
Councilman Lincoln Fielder.
Do we actively promote our trail system? Do we have trail maps? Do we try to promote that asset for our community to bring people here to ride on our trails?
So we do have trail maps. We need to update, there are some recent connectors that have been added in and that's in my budget for fiscal year 1819. It is one of the things that we promote. We do get requests at the visitor center and media requests, so it is something that is definitely a benefit to Kingman. And as Councilmember Staley had mentioned, one of the things we really want to do with White Cliffs is in the future, plan on connecting it into the golf course side so that we have an extra trailhead and it does connect the two parts of town.
For anybody that's watching online on their computer or that's in the audience, if they want to get a copy of those trail maps or if they want to see them, where can they find those trail maps?
They can come to the Kingman Visitor Center in the powerhouse and we have the trail maps there, or if they contact us, we can email them a PDF.
Is there a way to put them online when we're going through our refresh of the web?
When we have the new trail connectors, I'll put them online. Right now, I'm hesitant to put those online and have them get out too far and then people not have the updated maps.
Thanks.
Madam Mayor, just a quick comment that I would encourage you to market beyond people coming inside the powerhouse because that's how we'll get the revenue.
We did a television, we sponsored a segment that aired all over Arizona and we've put that up online and it highlighted the trails and the enhancements and we had Matt from BLM as well as members from Crata come out and they rode the trails. We captured video and we've been using that to promote the trails in the area.
On social media?
On social media, on our website and just putting out information in general for the public and for media that have been asking about what things are to do in the area.
Thank you.
You know, if I could just build on that, it'd be really good to get together with BLM partner at Monolith if there was a sign out there and maybe we sold ads, but to encourage people to come into town to have lunch, stick around a little bit longer, because I do feel like a lot of these people who are coming to ride Monolith, especially if they're coming from Vegas, or, I mean, even Flagstaff, you would just jump on I-40 and you would never make it down into the heart of downtown for lunch and those kind of things. So if there was a way to encourage people to really get off the trail and then stay and eat and shop, I mean, that, I think that would be a real win for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Do you feel like you have the direction?
I was going to say, unless I hear very loud objections to the contrary, when you see the preliminary budget, it'll have the 30,000 in for this.
Thank you.
If I could just throw, is there a way to increase that enough to put kiosks at our trail with a map and with the history and maybe the placards to make it more of a nature trail as well?
I'll ask Tina to follow up with Rob tomorrow morning and make sure that the amount that he gave you lets us do that. If it doesn't, you'll see a slightly higher amount so we can do that. And then just to remind everybody that as a part of the budget conversation from last Friday, responsibility for trails and grants and things like that will be moving the 1st of July from Rob's department to Park and Rec. Thank you very much, Josh and Rob.
Thank you.
Ready to talk about the next item?
We're going to talk about the next item and I'm getting concerned that that website redesign...
We're going to talk about the next item and then we're going to probably be about 6:58 or 6:59 in time to go to the business meeting.
All right, sounds good. Commission appointment.
City clerk is here to give a brief presentation on a suggested change in the commission appointment process. This is something that I've talked to the council about on previous occasions and Sid is here to explain what needs to be done for that to happen. Sid?
Hi, good evening. So our current commission process, our current commission appointment process is prescribed by the municipal code under section two and it outlines that when applications are received by the city clerk's office, they're forwarded to the mayor and the staff liaisons for the commissions. When a vacancy arises on a commission or at the end of the year when terms are expiring, the staff liaisons reach out to those applicants to see if they are still interested in serving on the commission. If they are, the applications for those still interested in serving are forwarded to the commission for them to interview and make a recommendation to the council and then all of the applications as well as the commission recommendation is forwarded to the whole council for the council to interview and make the final appointments. The concern is that right now it seems like the council may just take the advice of the commissions without maybe being willing to go beyond that and if they feel somebody else would be a better fit, make that appointment. So the staff recommendation is to eliminate the commission review from the process and applications would come directly to the council for their consideration. This would allow for a little bit more streamlined process. We don't have the delay, especially with our quarterly commissions, waiting for them to be able to review perhaps three, four months down the road, whenever they're able to get a quorum, before it comes to you, before they're able to be on the commission six, seven months later. So this would streamline that process, we're able to forward it to the council right away at the next council meeting and then they're ready to serve as soon as their next meeting. And this would also help eliminate any confusion that the appointments are made by the commissions rather than the council. So with that, staff is just looking for a direction on if council would like us to proceed with making this change in the ordinance. If so, we can bring it back at your first meeting in June and it would be effective 30 days later.
Thank you very much. You had a comment?
Madam Mayor, I would like to request that the voting for commission members actually take place in executive session. Other than that, I think all of this is great changes.
So voting is not allowed in executive session?
Okay, the discussion in executive session prior to the voting.
Okay.
Here's the attorney. Carl.
You can't vote in executive session, clearly. If you were going to do, if you want to do an executive session discussion, then you would obviously need to provide some notice to all those appointees or potential appointees. I understand that need, I mean, we can make it work that way, but it might bog things down. I'm not sure what kind of discussion you would expect in executive session that you wouldn't get in public.
So let me underscore what Carl said about voting. Obviously, that can't happen in an exec session. I have been involved with other city governments that interview the applicants in executive session, but they're very careful not to make comments about whether the applicant is acceptable, highly desirable, not acceptable, all those kinds of statements that would telegraph a choice so that when they come out of that executive session, they still have to go through the process of someone making a motion to appoint and someone, you know, seconding it in a vote. So the thrust of what Councilmember Crest is suggesting is that the interviews themselves be held in an executive session, I think, this is your turn. If you haven't had me put words in your mouth yet tonight, be patient. What I think Councilmember Crest is suggesting is that the interviews happen in an executive session and the votes happen in public. If that's your pleasure, from what Carl just said, that can happen. It might be a little more cumbersome, but that can happen. What you did on the PARG applicants, two weeks ago, four weeks ago, whenever you did PARG, you did, you basically used this process, interviewed the applicants in public and then voted in public, same night. And so that's really the two different processes, your choice. Only thing I'd say about the cities I've worked with that did the exec session interviews, they almost never voted the same night they were in exec. So there was a two-week delay from the time they interviewed to the time they took action on the appointment. That's just their process.
My consideration is that there's kind citizens that step up and offer to help and then ultimately we say, no, we don't want you. And that's unfortunate and I just didn't like how that process was.
Can I comment? I understand what you're saying, it's very much appreciated that people take the time to come in and fill out the application, go through the public process. My concern is I just don't feel like this is an appropriate use of executive session.
It's not?
I'm curious if we can find, if we can conduct the business of the city in public, that's what we need to do. Is there an option of having like a work session pre-meeting, something, what I used to always do is call, yeah, separate, public, but not in the presence of a full audience? That might be an option?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. And actually, if, it would be, excuse me, it would be my hope that where this goes ultimately, assuming you adopt this or a similar change, is that the appointments are all on the same calendar and you take a look at all the applicants and as a council, make a decision about which of the commissions we have a particular applicant would best serve on. So let's say they wanted to be on MUC plus planning and zoning plus airport and you're looking at them and you say, you know what, I think they ought to be on and you pick rather than, okay. So that's, but that's all this that Sid is in front of you asking is that you direct staff to prepare an ordinance change for your consideration two weeks, three weeks from tonight that clarifies that this is a council appointee process and eliminates the step of having the applications referred out to commissions.
And the vacancy schedule is something that we can take care of administratively so every year council will know every commission will have three vacancies or two vacancies depending on the year.
Thank you very much. Any other questions of staff in any direction?
If I could just make a quick comment, I'm very interested and often influenced by the input and recommendations of the commission members. And obviously, you know, these appointments, these are people that these people are going to be working with and, you know, they know their, the area, you know, the topic really well. I hate to cut them out of the process. Is there, I know that the issue is that sometimes some of these commissions don't meet frequently so we have to wait, you know, a long amount of time before we can get people appointed if we wait for the commissions to meet and then make their recommendations or whatever. Is there a way to keep the commissions involved, get their recommendations or at least, you know, you know, get their input? You know, maybe we could send out an email or just somehow get their... or just somehow get their input without having to wait for that commission to meet again and delay the process?
So, let me answer that on behalf of the clerk. I actually think that the appointments are the council's prerogative and that's just a basic belief that I have. And so, historically, I haven't been troubled by whether or not a council appointee fit in with the other members of a commission. And in fact, I've worked for some city councils who intentionally wanted to appoint people who didn't fit in with the other members of the commission for all sorts of reasons, mostly legitimate, mostly policy-driven. And so, I just, I think this, I think this appointment process is the council's prerogative and by involving the commissions that are affected, whether you're considering a PARG appointee or a planning commission appointee, to reach out to them, suggest recommendation power or suggestion power that isn't really contemplated with the whole idea of an advisory commission. So, I just, I appreciate what you're saying in terms of trying to get information, but I, I think that's, I think the appointment process belongs with this council and the mayor.
I agree with you, but I would just reiterate that, you know, I think that their input is valuable. I've actually, prior to appointing commission members, I've actually called members on the commission to get their input individually at times and I think that their input is valuable, but just want to throw that out there.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
After about five years on planning and zoning commission, I have two points to make. One is we didn't really like picking out people to, forward to council and then it's lose-lose. If council didn't pick somebody we recommended, then we were annoyed about it.
And I agree. Make no mistake, we certainly value what our commissions bring to us. We appreciate their recommendations, but they still, these are our commissions and I believe that we should go back to choosing, this council should select applicants.
I would agree.
For these commissions. So, that's where I'm at on that.
I think we were doing that before anyway, but I get, I get the point.
So, I think.
Mayor, what's your pleasure and the council's pleasure? Are you asking us to bring back the draft ordinance in three weeks to do?
That would be my wish.
Okay. I see heads nodding. Sid, you and Carl enjoy drafting.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, it's 7:04.
I'm going to suggest that the, we continue to build the suspense for the website.
And I'm going to suggest that Ron Fogg is going to do a great job presenting that.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Having said that, we'll call the regular meeting of the common council to order. We've already taken roll call. Before we begin, I see a lot of new faces in the audience. If anyone is here for discussion on item 7A under new business, the red light camera contract, as we discussed at 5:30, and I'll say it again now, that item has been pulled. It will not be considered or discussed by this council due to lack of support. So, if you're here for that, thank you for attending, but this will not be an item that we will be taking action on. Having said that, please stand for the invocation will be given by Pastor Jerry Dunn of Oak Street Baptist Church, followed by the pledge.
Let's pray. Father, as we come before your throne of grace today, we want to thank you for all your blessings to us. Father, for all the goodness and mercy that we experience each day of our lives. We ask your blessing upon the meeting today. We pray for Mayor Gates and for each member of the council. And Father, you would lead and guide them and direct them in the decisions that are made here, that they may always be for the betterment of our community and its people. Father, we pray for our police chief and for our fire chief and for all of those men and women who serve with him. We ask you to bless them, to watch over them, protect them, take care of them and their families. Father, we pray that you would just always be in our minds as we think, Father of all that we have. Thank you for this great city in which we live and for the peace and the prosperity that we enjoy. We thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 3843103A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions related thereto. Item number one is approval of minutes from the regular meeting minutes of May 1st, 2018. Any changes, corrections, or additions? Seeing none, all entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I second. Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Moving on to item number two, appointments, appointments to the Youth Advisory Commission. Discussion and consideration of appointing Bryn Zacherson and Cassidy Ellico to a one-year term on the Youth Advisory Commission. There are currently three vacancies and no additional applications at this time. Staff recommends approval. I know everyone's had a chance to review their applications. I saw a letter of recommendation as well. Are the applicants in the audience this evening? Do you wish to address the council? Please approach and state your name.
Hello, I'm Cassidy Ellico and I would like to be part of the youth commission because I haven't lived here very long and I don't know very much about this town. So, when I heard the opportunity to be part of this youth commission, I thought it would be a great chance for me to get to know this town, the community, and to further lead, develop my leadership skills.
Thank you very much. Any questions of the applicant? I want to say thank you for filling out the application. It's really nice that you're willing to serve the community.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and consideration. Sure.
Good evening. My name is Bryn Zacherson and I would really like to be appointed to Youth Advisory Commission because I was born here in Kingman. I've lived here all my life. I am very invested in this community and I love its people. Some of you may remember me. I am a member of the Marshall Brennan Club and I was one of the four who went to Washington DC. I'm very interested in law and politics and would like to gain more experiences in these areas. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for your offer to serve. Any questions of the applicant? Seeing none, we have, we have two applications. Do we want to take them together? All entertain nomination, please.
Yeah, I would nominate both Bryn Zacherson and Cassidy Ellico to the commission.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations and welcome. Okay, we have two proclamations this evening to read. First proclamation is in honor of National Public Works Week. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance and sustainable and resilient communities to the quality of life and well-being of Kingman's residents and are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated and dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting Kingman's streets, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste system, public transit, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public's interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of Kingman to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs because the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of these systems and programs. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of our community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the City of Kingman Public Works Department is materially influenced by people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Monica Gates, Mayor of the City of Kingman, State of Arizona, do hereby proclaim May 20th through 26th, 2018 to be designated as Public Works Week and in doing so, urge all citizens of the City of Kingman to join me in this observance.
Mayor, members of council, thank you for your proclamation. The American Public Works Association has celebrated Public Works Week since 1960. This year, it's May 20th through 26th. So, again, we appreciate your proclamation. We try to take this week as an opportunity to educate the public about what we do, services we provide. So, if you have any questions, I can try to answer them.
Thank you very much. Any questions of staff?
Yeah, any special events going on that week, Rob?
We're still working on planning some of those. Our original plan kind of fell through because some of the events outside of our control.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a second proclamation this evening. Whereas in January 2018, communities across Arizona identified 902 homeless veterans during point-in-time counts. And whereas 31%, that's 280 of those counted, are unsheltered veterans in Mojave County and more specifically, 85 were counted in Kingman. Whereas across the nation, 43% of homeless veterans are males between the ages of 51 and 61 and have served in the Vietnam War. And whereas homeless veterans are at a significantly increased risk of homelessness if they have low socioeconomic status, a mental health disorder, and/or a history of substance abuse. And whereas in June 2014, First Lady Michelle Obama announced the mayor's challenge to end veteran homelessness. And whereas in a continued effort to end veteran homelessness, the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and the US Department of Veterans Affairs is providing $43 million to 325 local public housing agencies across the country to provide a permanent home to more than 5,200 veterans. And whereas the prevalence of veteran homelessness in Mojave County is so significant, the HUD Veterans Affairs and Supportive Housing Division distributed 15 of the additional 25 Arizona housing vouchers this year to Mojave County veterans. And whereas all servicemen and women sign the dotted line to protect and serve our country and we have a duty as a community to give back to those who have selflessly given so much of themselves. Be it resolved, Kingman City Council is in full support of our veterans and stands ready to take the steps necessary to end veteran homelessness in our community. And in doing so, urge all citizens of this community to join them in support of the mayor's challenge to end veteran homelessness.
Pat Farrell, Jerry Ambrose Veterans Council. I'm from Kingman, Arizona. I want to thank the mayor and the council for this proclamation. This problem is already being repaired and all the tools are in place with the support group that we have to end this problem. And we want to be one of the few cities in the United States to end homelessness among our veterans in the future. We appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much. If I could make this presentation to Jamie, who's just really been the dynamo behind this effort.
I would just like to say thank you to you, Mayor, and thank you to Pat Farrell and the JAVC for everything you guys do, city council members. Thank you to all our men and women who have served. We have quite a plethora of resources and to get everybody in the community to work together to help this tragedy that is going on with our veterans and the homelessness and bringing the resources to the community just has been wonderful. And I didn't expect this, but I thank you very kindly for what you've done.
You're welcome. Absolutely. Thank you. And I believe the council would also wish to acknowledge Judge Singer for his efforts in working with the homeless veterans as well with your Veterans Court. Thank you. We have quite a few people signed up to speak on this issue. We're going to go ahead and just move that to call to the public comments from the public. Having said that, those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes, so in no particular order. If you don't wish, I see some people are leaving. That's all. Is it Joe Thornberry? I said that wrong. Would you kind of pronounce it?
Joe Thornberry.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, I'm the chairman for Workforce Amendment Board for Mojave and La Paz County. Just want to commend the mayor and all the other staff that have been involved on the homeless veterans issue. First meeting was about four or five weeks ago. We had a dozen people in the room. Last meeting was last week. We had 30 people in the room. We've already got some local businesses to donate the printing that's going to take place to get the resource guide printed and I'm very encouraged to see all the community support and thank you for the proclamation.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Next to speak, David Amtsboker.
Madam Mayor, distinguished council members, talking about the airport, it seemed to take up a good portion of your work session. I wanted to commend you on what appears to be maybe your final approach to the commission to take care of the airport. And as you probably know, or some of you know, many of the airport users, possibly a majority, are outside the city limits. I'm a member of the Experimental Aircraft Association that meets at the airport and I also served on the Municipal Utilities Commission for almost seven years. Having done that, I learned a lot about how the city is run and I think limiting the number of people that are on the city airport commission to five members from within the city and two members outside the city might not be the best way to approach it, but you appear to have reached a decision that will rectify that if needed. It is my hope that the airport commission will be comprised of people with an understanding of aviation. By doing so, that's going to be one way to eliminate the problems that have occurred in the past with the Kingman Airport Authority where their executive board had no members with any aviation background. Apparently, my three minutes is up, but so.
You have a little time. You have a little time.
Okay. So, if you have a commission that is comprised of not necessarily all pilots, but people with an aviation background, I think that will be beneficial not only to the airport, but to the city as a whole. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Jeanne Morgaine. Jeanne Morgan.
Thank you, Jeanne Morgan. I'm a Kingman resident. What I wanted to mirror the...I wasn't expecting to hear the work session about the trails. I moved to Arizona in 2009 specifically to move to work and live at the Grand Canyon so that I could hike every day, which I did for three years that I lived there. It was a little bit disappointing to move to Kingman with such incredibly amazing geology here and to find such limited access to trails. I didn't go to the powerhouse looking for trails, but when I went to, I think it was the Fish and Game Office down on Wallapie Road, it was almost nothing that I got. So that has been a little bit of a challenge. I really support that. I know Peace Surplus Equipment Store in Flagstaff, I have friends who live in the Pacific Northwest who think of it like visiting a friend when they come back to Prescott, just to be able to go to Peace Surplus. So there is great advantage to that. But what I came to speak about tonight is, I wanted...I know Mr. Bacon is on his way out. We have a new city manager. I have really appreciated what he has brought to the city council. These work sessions have been incredible. I look forward to learning such depth and wonderful information. It has educated me just immensely about issues that are important to me, particularly the water. When the U.S. Geological Service came and spoke, it just has really been...so I appreciate that about what Mr. Bacon has brought, and I look forward to the new city manager. However, I did want to follow up on something that did happen at the last session, the issue of the light when it was added into the consent agenda and then got pulled because the gentleman had called that and said it hadn't gone through proper process. I know Mr. Bacon had...and he had made a comment about how he tucked it in there, and if someone had called it, he would pull it back out. But my issue with that was this, is that I know he was probably trying to just hurry that along because he's trying to wrap up things, and there was nothing malicious on his part. But in terms of the city, when we watch the process, it is...it makes us wonder if this is a small thing and it's not going through proper process just unless someone catches it, then what else is happening that we haven't caught? So it is a trust issue. So I just ask the council to be cognizant of that. I know it takes more time sometimes to go through proper protocols, but it is important for the trust of the city to do that, which is also why we're still calling for a forensic audit of the Kingman Airport Authority, because if they can, in public with full light of day, be voting for money for their personal laws, lawyer fees that was not theirs, we want to know what else was taking place behind the scenes, because we cannot trust what they were doing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Wade Glenn Alaven. I don't know if I pronounced your name correctly.
That's all right. My name is Wade Alaven. I'm living in Kingman now for eight years. I'm a physician at K R M C, and I wanted to bring up one topic that was discussed earlier, and that's about building trails and supporting cycling of all of its types here in Kingman. When we recruit physicians to K R M C, one of the main things that I'm in charge of doing is bringing them mountain biking on one of the mornings. I can think of at least two physicians we've been able to bring in purely because of the experiences they were able to have. Western cities that are small can sometimes find great success for both tourism and also recruitment and retaining individuals here by being able to support outdoor recreational activities such as this. I think to neglect that kind of opportunity, especially where Kingman is so full of so many resources with it, it has such great opportunities, is probably my optic for our future. In addition, as a physician, I care about the health of our community. Right now, I have six small children. I love going biking with them. It is probably the least safe place I've lived in order to be able to go biking, after living in Minnesota, living in Nevada, living in Virginia. There's very few trails. There's very few bike lanes. So we're forced to go to those places, sometimes that are beyond their abilities as small children. Being able to support cycling in all of its different forms, both mountain biking and road cycling, is important. One example is my son. My son recently received his Eagle Scout and the Boy Scouts, and part of his project was to build a section of trail out of monolith. But the week after he...one, during the building of the trail, we had at least 40 people from the community coming to help, just by putting up a couple of signs, because that's how much people cared about it. The week afterwards, there was a mountain biking race that was held at the same trail and used portion of his trail. I saw cars from Nevada. I saw cars from California. I saw people coming in just for that opportunity, because we have world-class mountain biking, but limited trails to actually take advantage of the beautiful scenery that we have. I just want you to consider that as you think about how you are funding it and how things are used. I know there's a finite amount of money in every budget, but I think this is something that is worthwhile and worth considering in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, Council, my name's Harley Pettit, resident of Kingman. Actually, a couple of things. The work sessions, I've asked before that you consider moving them to alternate Tuesdays. If that's not going to work, I have another suggestion, that we move the work sessions to the end of the council meeting. People that attend the council meetings have to go to work the next morning, and when they get drawn out, it makes it a little more difficult. So I think I'd like another approach to the work sessions. The other thing is, on the agenda item 5A, I think we're putting the cart in front of the horse here, talking about buying property and state land. First of all, we don't have a traffic interchange yet. And the other thing is, I think it would be the responsibility of the developer to spend his money and not the city's money. That's my input on that.
Jeremy Palmer.
Jeremy Palmer, resident of Kingman. I work for Mojave County and Parks, also a member of Crata, the mountain bike organization in the area, speaking to advocate for trails. A lot of us here are in support of trails, and following up on the work session which Ryan gave, did a great job, covered a lot of facts. So, just trying to add to what he's already said, we, you know, we have great scenery, we have great trails, but we have really no tie to city. And I know we're working on the Surback Cliffs or the White Cliffs Trail system, but I would encourage a plan going forward for trails for open space to tie, you know, there's so much more that trails do. They connect portions of town. You know, it's a secondary transportation for some people. I know my wife used to walk the cliffs back and forth. She lives by the golf course, and you used to have to walk to school downtown through there. So, I know they would be used by more than just cyclists. There are also a lot of people that homeschool, and they look for educational opportunities that are outside. And a lot of the problems with the trails here, we don't have developed trailheads, so we don't have restroom facilities, parking facilities, or just a general feeling of safety for people that are out there on their own. The other thing that I know, working for the county, is there's a statewide trail initiative called the Sun Corridor Trail. It's being pushed by Maricopa County, Pinale County, and it's coming this way. We, you know, like we are the 40, the corridor for the 40 and everything else, this is going to be a huge corridor for trails. We know that with the Peace Trail, the Sun Corridor Trail. So, again, spending the time, the money to put together a good plan to attack the trail systems and make sure we build something that's an asset for the city in many different ways. And then if we could throw economic development dollars at it to promote it, that would be great too, so it's not all funded through parks or public works. And that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Denise Neath. I'm a City of Kingman resident, and tonight I'm dressed in my hiking outfit, and I'm a hiker and I'm a biker. I'm a local hiker and I'm a destination hiker. I hike with dozens of people from here in town. In the spring and in the fall, we do monolith, badger, Castle Rock, bail loop, wagon wheel. We do all of the trails in town. We alternate weekly. Then, when summer comes on and the snakes come out, we go up to the Wallapies, and we do all those trails up there. All of the trails that we have here in town are wonderful for us for our endurance and for getting used to altitude, because when we go on our destinations, we spend money. We go in hotels, we have...we eat in restaurants, we shop the local stores, we need supplies, we spend money. I can tell you where I've been. I went to Page. I did the Antelope Trails and the Horseshoe Bend. We stayed two days there. Restaurants, yum, lots of good shopping. Prescott, they've got the granite dels and the grottos and many other trails. We spent three days there. Went to Flagstaff. We did Mount Tempray, 12,000 feet. Hiking in the Wallapies helped us get to that elevation. We did Supai just last month. I bought a shirt. We spent lots of money there. I'm looking to do the Grand Canyon rim to rim. It'll probably be a day or two experience and a lot of money spent there. We're going to be going to Vegas and doing Mount Charleston. So you can see that money could come to town if you only gave us an opportunity. I'll just keep a couple of minutes. If our trails are marketed correctly, we could have lots of business coming to town. And the other greater thing for all of Kingman people, we could have much better fitness, wellness, and better quality of life in our town. Please consider all those new trails coming in for all destination people and for our Kingman people. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon Summers.
Mayor Gates, council members, I'm Shannon Summers, and I'm also here to support the trails. There's a little bit of data. I know that Ryan did an excellent job. Did you know that even in 2013, more than $88 million was brought to the state of Arizona through cycling tourism? $30 million in tourism and more than $50 million in retail and manufacturing. So that was 2013, and the enthusiasm has done nothing but grow since then. I travel a lot. Like our previous speaker, I travel with friends. And in recent years, we've been to Moab, St. George, Mesquite, Boulder City, Lake Tahoe, Townsend, Colorado, Crater Lake, Oregon, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, Kellogg, Idaho, Big Bear, California, Flagstaff, Prescott, Tucson, Phoenix, Sedona, and more. We take our bikes to every place. We get a hotel or an Airbnb, and we find good places to eat. We pay our entry fees to each event, and then we shop. These events draw anywhere from 50 to 11,000 riders. Some events last several days. Yes, I am a cycling tourist. Thousands of mountain and road biking enthusiasts pass through Kingman to get to their next event or their cycling destination. The towns we visit have suffered economic hardship in the past. Some of them had to reinvent their economic strategies to survive. Some of those are Leadville, Colorado, Durango, Colorado, and Kellogg, Idaho. Mountain biking has made them a destination. My question to you is, why not Kingman? We have beautiful scenery. We have desert mountains, high desert and mountains, excellent riding conditions for most of the year, and they're driving by anyway with their bikes. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Denise Myers.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am a cyclist as well, so I'm here to speak in support of the trails. And I have lived in Kingman my whole life, so I definitely want to see us continue to grow and become a great city. And, you know, I'm listening to everybody talk, and the two speakers right before me were talking about all their traveling, and that's what we do. We travel, and we only go to places that we can ride our bikes. And I'm getting married at the end of next month. We're going to Park City for two weeks for our honeymoon, because biking is important to us. And the people that bike, that's a huge part of their life. That's everything they do. Their trips are scheduled around it. Spending money, they both talked about how much you spend, and you do. You have to spend money when you go to these places, and you're looking for supplies, you're looking for food. And one of our races that we're going to have that just got put on MBAA, it was the endurance or the Enduro Race. That race alone will bring...you guys should be able to see what that's going to do for Kingman. It's at the end of September, and they don't announce that course until the Thursday before the race. So guess what? Everybody comes to Kingman on Thursday, because they haven't had a chance to ride it, they don't know where it's going to be. So they're going to come on Thursday. The races don't happen until Sunday. So they're going to be practicing and staying here and eating. They're going to enjoy downtown Kingman, because I can tell you that if they're riding Enduro, they're usually enjoying beer. So it's a little bit different than cross-country, because they're a little bit rougher riding. It's like you're timed on your downhill segments, and then you just climb slowly, you know, through the uphills. But that is big for Kingman to have that. And I know that it's beeping on me, and I could talk forever about mountain biking, but I found a post that was done by a guy named John Schilling, and it's called "My Two Shillings Worth." And he does a blog on mountain biking. And if you get a chance to look it up, it's phenomenal, even though it's three years old. He was just so excited, and he put so many pictures in about what our trails could offer. And he put in there, "Please invite me back when you have more for me to see." And he travels everywhere and writes blogs for people everywhere. Anyway, thank you.
Hey, thank you, and congratulations. TJ Finn.
Good evening, council, staff, and Madam Mayor, and thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm very encouraged by all the comments in support of trails. I've lived in Kingman for a little over four years now, and one of the things that I have enjoyed about living here is monolith gardens. I'm an enthusiastic mountain biker and trail runner, and I'm out there two, three times a week, and it is absolutely fantastic. It's really a gem. And so I want to encourage the council to continue to invest in outdoor recreation, specifically in a multipurpose trail system, the kind that Ryan alluded to, that is comprehensive and connected for a few reasons. I'm going to echo some of the sentiments that have already been said tonight, but first of all, there's money in it. The outdoor recreation industry is an absolute behemoth. Nationwide, it is an $887 billion industry. It's bigger than the pharmaceutical industry, which I think is great news. More Americans participate in outdoor recreation than attend NFL, NBA, Major League Baseball, and NHL games combined. Americans spend more on trail sports than they do on home entertainment. They spend more on cycling and skateboarding than they do on video games. A lot of this is the gear, the mountain bikes, but actually, the vast majority of it is on travel. So people who are into outdoor recreation travel. You heard some of the comments already. So in a city that is reliant, at least in some part, on tourism spending as a revenue stream, I think outdoor recreation should be a big part of the economic development plan. And I was very encouraged by some of the comments that have already been made tonight by Mr. Bacon and others that recognize that. A couple statistics that I found, or a couple things. The Arizona Department of Transportation did a study a couple of years ago. The average participant in one of these Arizona cycling events spends $260 per day. Okay, so that's just an idea. If you have 100 people participating from out of town, that's a pretty good chunk of money right there. The Prescott Whiskey Race, 2,000 participants, that brings about $6 million into the economy for Prescott. Good trails don't just benefit the economy, they benefit citizens directly. Good trail system increases property values. Better walkability and bikeability scores make the city a more attractive place to live. Education opportunities, trails, and outdoor recreation improve educational outcomes. I like to take my son out to monolith whenever we can. Even moderately active retirees- Uh, even moderately active retirees have significantly lower healthcare costs. Um, outdoor recreation helps veterans cope with PTSD. And, um, I was gonna say a lot more about Krata. This is a great group of dedicated volunteers and I'm glad that there was some recognition of that. Um, I'm getting the triple beep, so I'll wrap it up. But, um, thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank you for supporting, uh, trails and recreation in Kingman.
Thank you. Susan Williams?
Madam Mayor, City Council Members, thank you. My name is Susan Williams and I'm a registered dietitian and I've worked my career at the Health Department promoting health in all places. And all places means where we live, work, and play. Um, in this past December, there was seven key people throughout our community. Um, City Council member, uh, economic development from the county, the Parks and Recs, um, Park and Rec Jeremy and, um, Crata. We applied to the National Association of Chronic Disease Directors to be considered to attend the Walking and Walkability Institute. And it's, the CDC promotes this and it's all over the nation. They pick eight communities throughout the nation. And, um, we were considered, but we were not selected this year. So there is momentum and this Council, why work harder when you have groups and entities in our community that are willing to help? So I'm promoting these trails and especially downtown to uptown. And one of the reasons why we weren't selected, we didn't have enough, uh, city representation and, and showing that the city was part of building these trails. So we'll apply again next year and, um, hopefully, um, you'll select the funds to improve our trails and also make sure that health is a part of our economic development and community growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Ferry?
Thanks for having me again. Uh, I just wanna say thank you so much for, um, giving consideration to this because I think and I know these people are giving their blood, sweat, and tears to volunteer. And as a volunteer, it's so important to feel like your city supports you. Um, I am personally grateful to Crata. Um, they, we, our family enjoys the trails that they maintain and I can say, I can see such an amazing difference in the trails. There's, the signage is getting really, really great. They're so clean. I can't believe, you know, you, you hardly see any trash at all. And, um, these guys took my son mountain biking for the first time the day before Christmas. You know, he got his very first mountain bike. He's been riding bikes for a long time, but his first mountain bike. Uh, and so I'm just really grateful to these guys. I try to tell everyone I know, these are the guys that maintain our trails for nothing, you know, for their love of what they're doing. And as a city, it's super important that we show them that we support them, especially if we want more volunteers to step up in the future. Um, I have one more thing I wanna talk about. Uh, my mother was a special, has been a special ed teacher and, um, has, uh, given special ed services my entire life. As a kid, she was a Special Olympics coach. And so, um, my sister and I spent a lot of time, uh, with the Special Olympics and, and that was really important to me. Um, as a young adult, I worked in a lot of, um, special ed classrooms and I worked in day programs. So these could be great opportunities, educational opportunities for kids in school. It could be great op, educational opportunities for homeschoolers, but also it'd be a great opportunity for all these day programs we have in town. I don't feel like we do enough, um, to support our disabled community here. Um, after that, I worked with, um, elderly people and disabled people in a home healthcare type of a setting. And, you know, as you get older, it's just, these trails are, are more difficult. Our trails are, are pretty difficult. And to have some trails that are a little more, uh, moderate for people to be able to enjoy, I think is really important. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm not sure if I'm gonna pronounce this correctly. Katie Auer? Did I? Thank you. Nobody says it perfectly.
Thank you for having me. My name's Katie Auer. I'm a local physician and I'm also an avid mountain biker and road biker. I'm a member of Crata as well. And I just wanted to come tonight and talk a little bit about, you know, everybody talks about the economic impacts to, that cycling can bring to Kingman. And all of those things are true, but I wanted to talk a little bit about what cycling means to me and what it can mean to other people in our community. So when I think about starting cycling, I didn't pick up mountain biking until I was in my, uh, early to mid forties. And so it's really taught me a lot about how to be a better physician, how to be a better wife, how to be a better human being. And that's because it's taught me to plan ahead. Um, it's really important when you're biking, you keep your eyes as far ahead into the future as you can so that you're not surprised by anything. Um, it's really a lot more fun when you look around, when you take some time to notice the beauty that surrounds you and the, the really interesting things that are going on. And we all need to take a little bit more time and, and look around. Sometimes you need to just let it go. Sometimes you're really afraid and you're really kinda white knuckling the brakes and, uh, sometimes you just need to just sit your butt back as far as you can get it and just let it go. And when I don't know something, it's learned, it's taught me to learn to take a step back and kinda look at the situation. There's no shame in approaching a really hard section of a trail and looking at it and planning for it, planning my line, maybe trying it out a couple of times. And I never get better unless I push myself. And that's what mountain biking allows me to do. Climbing those bigger climbs, going down those faster hills, really lets me push myself. And failing, failing's the only way to get better. And I never learn more when I'm successful on the trail than I do when I'm not successful on the trail. Um, mountain biking's my community. It's taught me respect for my environment, to take care of my trails. All of these things are things that metaphorically we can like apply to our lives. The City Council can apply to this as far as planning for things in the future, trying to bring more trails into town, trying to bring that economic development into town. And I just wanted to let you know that it means a lot to all of us in Crata, very personally. And we wanted you to see that so that you would know and that you would be encouraged to keep supporting us and being advocates for trails as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor Gates and City Council, fellow citizens, I'm Mike DelGrosso. I'm a retired serviceman. I've lived in Kingman for six years. Um, during this time, I've watched my neighborhood streets go from fair condition to mediocre at best, with large potholes and cracks everywhere. I've read many articles that have said the public works, particularly wastewater systems, are also in dire need of repair. I felt compelled to come here tonight because I watched these meetings and I've seen the disdain that some members seem to have for other members, even smirking at times at their opinions when discussing different directions for Kingman. I'm concerned about this leadership. In the local newspapers, I've read about one council member who was arrested for DUI, then continually failed to abide by the restrictions placed on him by his judicial sentencing, at best a lack of self-control and discipline. I've watched as another council member was accused of plagiarism by the local papers, stating he has a problem with telling the truth, another basic principle of decency I've tried to instill in my children and try to live by myself. This councilman also claims to be conservative, although except for his numbers pertaining to family outings, to Starbucks once a month, I don't find any of his numbers matching up to conservative totals or values. Arizona seems to have a lot of fake and flaky conservatives. Kingman is going through some difficult times right now, but nothing this city goes through should be left in the hands of people that can't control their own personal lives properly or those who don't listen and feel that the citizens should have a right to vote on things like tax increases or any other matter that directly affects their lives or adversely affects their wallets. This is a poor community for the most part. I'm not against having some sort of temporary tax if approved by the voters to pay for needed inner-city repairs and plans to increase revenue, but a council member that would tie TPT to blocking a mutually beneficial deal between Kingman and the KRMC Board of Directors should be ashamed and not held in high regard. I listened to these meetings and two weeks ago, when Councilmember Lingefelter said one problem he has with the KRMC plan is because it will not bring revenue for possibly up to six years or longer. Even if true, this is without costing the citizens of Kingman additional taxes or taking the risk of the plan's success. However, that councilman member did not seem to have the same concern when he promoted taking over $100 million or more from the taxpayers without a vote of the people to fund two interchanges, whereas the citizens take all the risks. Such a project would certainly take a lot longer than six months before it would send money back and would likely be over 30 years before it paid for itself. The council should look real hard at who owns these properties out of these areas where the interchanges are to take place. Citizens that come before you supporting those ideas that stand to make a lot of money off of the property sales or new businesses should not be held in the same regard as ordinary citizens like me, trying to feed their families and pay their monthly bills off of fixed incomes. Government has made enough false promises. Thank you.
Edwin Mann?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I came today with my rambling notes and not my prepared statement, so I'm gonna riff it off the cuff here. I'm a local resident. I work in a local bike shop, uh, member of Krata. I'd like to give a little backstory on Krata for you guys. Uh, one of the reasons why we even started Krata was our desire and hopes to have trails uh, over here at White Cliffs. Uh, it's a, a lost opportunity there. Um, I'd also like to point out that Arizona is ranked fourth globally in our trail system. We have 2,400 trails here, which usually carries a rating, and this is a consumer rating of three and three-quarter stars. Kingman alone is ranked 299th, and that is pretty astounding for our measly 18 trails. It's number 12th in the state, carrying a consumer rating of four and three-quarter stars, nearly a perfect rating for a place with such a minuscule amount of trail. Badger, my personal favorite trail, one that has been mentioned here tonight, that is number 11 in the state, only to be superseded 1 through 10 by trails in Sedona. Sedona is world-class. Companies from all over the world go to Sedona and use their terrain as testing facilities and marketing and media center point for cycling. I think we have the opportunity to have those same attributes from our area that lends us. Uh, I noticed that in the cycling industry, things were on the rise rapidly and I decided to make this a career change. Uh, one of the things in cycling that is really kinda getting tossed around quite more often than not is cycling is the new golf. Once you get your initial investment in your equipment, you're free to roam. As people have mentioned, we go to places to ride our bikes. We spend money to do so. I do not take a vacation unless there is a gold star level ride center or better. It's not even worth my time. People here in Kingman deserve that, that income. They deserve that commerce that we're just not seeing. Kingman, Arizona specifically, has seized more sunny days than nearly any place that you could find in North America. Our inclement weather, our small rural environment is a major attraction to those out-of-town visitors to come see our trails and enjoy our stuff. A lot of the things that you've noticed online, if you go and just Google Monument Valley, the one that sticks with me the most is a French guy who comes here year after year who claimed that Monolith Gardens in Kingman, Arizona is a mini Monument Valley that you could have all to yourself. I think that we're losing a lot of opportunity by not investing in this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak during call to the public. Is there anyone in the audience? Heather Muley? Thank you. I'm sorry, I have a stack here. I'm sorry I missed it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council Members. Um, I am a local bike shop owner as well and, um, trails in this city are so important and within our county. Um, I too am a bike enthusiast. I take my vacations places so that I can bike, my husband and I. And not only that, I'm a leader of a women's mountain bike organization. We have the first chapter here in Arizona. Um, Southern California and us together have almost 3,000 members. We go all over the states with one another to support one another. And the more people that we can get here with organizations and planned rides, I have people that come into my shop all the time. Councilmember Lingefelter asked about trail maps. We give trail maps out daily. We offer to bring people out to the trails daily. Um, we just had a gentleman that was here filming for a, uh, outdoor show and they were actually in WikiUp. He came to Kingman and we took his crew out for a ride. They're gonna be back. They thought it was absolutely beautiful. So, um, you know, from a health standpoint, from our youth, our youth don't have much to do here. It's tough. It's tough raising kids. If we can get them on bikes and get them off the electronics and get them back outside, you know, the obesity rate, we can get these kids doing something active, something they can do with their families and their friends. And, um, I don't know if there's a little gal here, but, uh, she's a teenager and, you know, we're one of the few towns that doesn't have a NICA team, uh, which is a, a high school mountain biking team. And, you know, she was saying, "We need trails for younger children to be able to go out and ride." And this is our opportunity. Um, you know, let's not pass it up. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
One other thing I did wanna mention is this is Payson's Trail Map. So if you can see all of the trails that they have, this is where we wanna be. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Does anyone else in the audience wish to address the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Is there any item on the agenda any member of council wishes to remove for discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to item six under Old Business, a supermajority vote regarding TPT and use tax. At the May 1st City Council meeting, the council directed staff to modify ordinance 1863, supermajority requirements regarding the increase and/or rededication of the city's TPT and use taxes. The new language requires five out of seven in support, to support an increase of the TPT tax rate and a six out of seven to rededicate previously dedicated TPT taxes. Staff recommends adoption of ordinance number 1863.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, members of council, as I said before, the reason it says staff recommends is that that's what you asked us to prepare. So, um, I would defer to any questions or comments that you or the members of council might have regarding 6A.
Well, I, I guess I'm gonna ask the question I've asked before. Is there, can we not discuss these separately? Can?
Discuss? You mean the five versus the six? Is that what, sure you can't? So it's just incorporate it into one ordinance? So, um, are you, if you're asking, can, can you consider doing each of these items as separate ordinances? Right? Is that what you're asking?
That's what I'm asking, I mean.
Okay. Um, I think the answer to that is yes.
Oh, okay.
Uh, but the city attorney did the drafting, so I'll defer to him.
Well, I drafted it per direction, but if the council doesn't want, what? I don't know if you're asking if you don't want one of the subsections?
Must vote separately on each of the ideas.
So you want to do a separate ordinance for the increase and a separate ordinance for the movement or the possible rededication?
Rededication, yeah.
I can draft it that way.
Okay. And, and I know we've had ample discussion on this.
And I know we've had ample discussion on this. For these two very important issues, I would support a supermajority of six for both of these issues. So, that's why I would like to consider them separately. Of course, I understand where you're coming from. It's not the will of the council. I'm just telling you where I'm coming from.
Whatever the council wants.
Right. Other comments?
Madam Mayor, I, two weeks ago, said that I feel firmly that the supermajority of six for tax increases, that's so much more important than rededication.
Rededication.
Thank you very much. Of TPT money. And as this ordinance is tonight, I'm going to have to vote against it because I will not support a supermajority of five for tax increases. However, I do support the rest of the ordinance, but I will vote against it for that reason.
Councilmember Crass, I'm just telling you my position. I think the rededication is equally as concerning to me. That is saying, we're going to pass, we're going to pass a tax increase, and then we can use it for another purpose. And I feel also that should not be just a mere majority of the council. I would like to see that as six-one.
I think it currently is six.
Are both of them six-one? That's what I'm looking for, both of them to be six-one.
Item B is six members.
Maybe I should put these on? Thank you.
Yeah, I don't mind if it's two resolutions, or that's fine. I think that, you know, if you say you're going to use a half cent for our pavement preservation, which we've had several discussions about that, we are of a common understanding that we need to fund our roads between the, between four and four-and-a-half million a year, and the only way to do that is with a half cent of that pavement preservation money. That's a promise that we need to keep to the citizens, so there needs to be a supermajority there. And we've had equally as many conversations on the importance of the lack of a capital budget and the need for a dedicated funding source for a capital budget. We just heard tonight, you know, on the water, but the situation's not any better with our other capital needs. That's a promise. We need to put a half cent to our capital budget, and that needs to be six-one-two. On the other issue, you know, regionally, I would just point to the, you know, I think it's noble, the supervisor from Havasu, he's got a lot of power, and I wouldn't want just one individual to, just on ideology or something, to harm the city on what we can, what we can do, or what the city can do, whoever's on council. So, you just have to look at the county and the difficulty that they have had if you were to go to a six-one on that issue, so.
Other thoughts?
I was just going to say, Madam Mayor, that depending on what other members have to say, if you're comfortable having these split so that Mr. Foggan doesn't have to explain how three became two became one, the way the interim manager had to explain that, then the city attorney's more than happy to draft the same ordinances with the split and then bring it back to you in two, three weeks. I keep forgetting that there's a three-week gap here.
I would appreciate that.
And so, if you're willing, if the council's willing to do that, then I think that, I know that would be my suggestion about how to proceed.
Thank you. Is that all right with the council? Do you need a motion?
No, I, definitely, the consensus appears to split it, and if we split it, I'll probably draft the language the same, but if there's a discrepancy of how the council wants those numbers to be calculated, we can, I think, hash it out and make the amendment at the meeting itself, so.
But there will be, just to be clear, on behalf of my successor, there will be two separate, okay?
Two ordinances.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And before we move on, we do have two people signed up to address the council on this item. Mr. Dickmeyer, Doug Dickmeyer?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Doug Dickmeyer. I am not a mountain bike rider. But I am a citizen.
Yes, not like that.
Councilmember Lingonfelder stated at the last council that a six-one majority vote should be enacted to protect the TPT monies designated for pavement preservation and capital improvements and other projects deemed for this reason. I agree with that. Councilmember Lingonfelder also stated, relating to the TPT, a six-one supermajority would make it harder to get things done. I don't agree with that. It's not supposed to be easy to raise taxes. Raising the TPT rate on the citizens is a major undertaking and should require a majority consent of the council. The county requires a unanimous vote to increase sales tax. All supervisors must agree. I believe a six-one majority for increasing the TPT rate and protecting the TPT money designated for certain projects like pavement preservation and capital improvements should be required, should require a supermajority vote of six-one to enact any changes. There should be only one supermajority vote, and that should be six-one. I don't think a supermajority vote should be tiered, and to answer Mr. Lingonfelder, one person can't screw this up because it's a six-one vote. So, it just seems like the right thing to do for the City of Kingman, and I hope you enact that a, this council only has one supermajority, and it would be six-one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Harley Pettit? I think he left, okay. Anyone else wish to address the council on this item? Okay, so we have direction for staff, no need to make a motion. Thank you very much. Moving on to, well, 7A, that's been pulled, that won't be discussed this evening. Moving on to department reports?
None.
Announcements by Mayor, council members, city manager?
Excuse me, I wanted to go back to the department reports real quick if I could. Could I ask the city clerk if she could please let us know what spots on that ED commission are hard to fill?
I have to go back and look at the applications, but all of them.
You haven't had any applicants?
We have four applicants currently, but I don't know that any of them fit the designated ordinance.
Okay. Could you email that to us? Because then we could go out in the community and try to find people to fill those positions so we can get moving forward on that.
I'll review that in the morning.
Thank you, Sydney.
Okay. Moving on to announcements by Mayor, council members, city manager, starting at the left.
I have one at the end.
Okay. Councilmembers, daily?
Yes, I just wanted to announce that the Youth Advisory, I'll put it on. I wanted to announce that the Youth Advisory Commission met this last month, and it was amazing. We've got a lot of great members on the commission, and we just got picked up two more, and I'm very excited for the progress that we're going to see going forward. They've already selected a service project that's going to be amazing, and we're nailing down a date. I think we have one, but it's going to be presented at the next Youth Advisory Commission, and we'll definitely make that announcement at the next city council meeting as well.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Yocum?
Nothing much this evening, but Mr. Bacon has made several references to three weeks. This is a rare five Tuesday month, so see you back in three weeks in June.
All right. Thank you so much. I don't have anything this evening, Councilmember?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
I just have a couple of things. It's a question to be considered. I'm wondering if there's going to be a July 3 council meeting. It's, as we all know, the day before the 4th of July. And so, that's just a question for staff to consider. I will not be at the July 17 council meeting, and it's Mr. Bacon's last council meeting, and I just have the most sincere heartfelt thank you for everything that you and your wife that has had to put up with us have done for our community, for our city, and for our city council. I will always be thankful for the time that you've spent here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. As evidenced by the staff today, I was privileged to eavesdrop on the little farewell. Obviously, you've left Kingman better than you found it, and you've made an impression on all of us.
Thank you. Let me address Councilmember Crass's question about July 3. Staff has, if you'll notice on your work session topics, intentionally left the 3rd of July open so that we don't have to reschedule the work sessions from the 3rd to another meeting. If this council chooses to not have a meeting on the 3rd, all it takes is a motion from somebody to cancel the meeting for the 3rd, and it will be canceled, and you have two meetings between now and then to decide whether you want to cancel the 3rd. But staff is, staff is not planning on having a work session on the night of the 3rd, just so you know.
So, we'll take action, we can take action on that on the first meeting in June.
You could, in fact, I could see the city clerk writing a note to put an item on the June 5 agenda, which is consideration of canceling the July 3 meeting.
Is there any opportunity to maybe let us know what kind of agenda we might be looking at? I mean, I don't want to get so far behind that meetings, you know, the next meeting is terribly long.
I'm sure the clerk's office can provide you an idea of what items would be there.
Okay.
Just to remind members of council, your two meetings in June are the ones where you do the budget, and then typically, there are a lot of things on the second June meeting that go to implementing the budget. So, we're talking, for instance, we're talking about the new fire station. We might be ready to have a recommendation on financing for that available on the, on the same night that you do the adoption of the budget, capital projects that are underway, pavement management, you get the picture. So, it's the programming to get started in the next fiscal year actually starts the night you adopt the budget. So, that's more than you probably wanted to hear about the mechanics of the second meeting in June and the two meetings in July. Since I have the floor and this section of the meeting, this is actually the ninth city that I've said goodbye to in my role as city manager, and none has been more difficult than this one to.
I thought we decided on challenging.
Yeah, exactly. And so, I would want to start with thanking a whole lot of people. First, the mayor and this council, who very quickly were able to build an effective working relationship with not only myself but with the senior staff so that we could accomplish all that we accomplished together. Secondly, the director corps themselves, who demonstrated in more ways than I can share with you that they were willing to take direction and be held accountable for their actions. I will always remember that. Third, the city staff itself, the people you really don't pay attention to, they're just the ones out there doing the work. You know, they're the rank-and-file police officers, firefighters, street workers, water treatment plant operators, golf course staff, everywhere you would look, the people that take bills from utility customers, not all of whom are thrilled to part ways with their money, certainly not in the amounts that we ask. And then the members of the public who have had the confidence to call the city manager's office and actually ask questions. Hopefully, I have been a person that has been willing to answer those questions and that we have helped build a better understanding between the city and those people who took the time to call. And as you have indicated, Susan, who's my wife and who's sitting out in the audience watching tonight, couldn't do this without her. So, how did we get from November to now? We did that really by focusing on goals, not only at the work sessions, at the council meetings, and in our individual conversations. We tried to drive that with data, something that is as natural to me as breathing, but is essential to managing a modern government. And then something that I trust Ron Foggan will continue and accelerate, which is a sense of urgency about getting the jobs of city government done. One of the great joys I have is looking around the city and seeing examples of city staff who understood sense of urgency mattered, and I don't have to go through those examples with you. And then the next thing is, I've never promised you that my recommendation was the only way. I just promised you that it was a way. And so, we've had a lot of opportunity for disagreement on policy direction or administrative judgment, for that matter. But I have been impressed with our ability to do that civilly, whether it's in my office or at this dais. I have never felt disrespected by anything the seven of you had to say, and hopefully you feel the same way about me. And so, that, I suggest, is essential as you go forward, especially with Ron, to be able to continue that. And so, with that, I say thank you and good night.
See now, you got me all choked up. Request for future work session agenda.
I think you ought to have about 50 of them in the next three meetings personally, but that's just a thought.
Well, and I know you're getting ready to leave. I know we've all said our goodbyes because we're going to be entering into executive session.
Right.
And you will not be in attendance.
That is correct.
Okay, so.
Sorry, can I, I would like to request one item. I did have it written down here, for a future work session item, and that would be a presentation on what the Sun Corridor Trail is and how that affects Kingman.
Got that? Anything else?
I was wanting to confirm that the postponed website redesign update would be moved to three weeks from today, to the first session, or first meeting in June.
You don't want to continue this net, this build for the big?
Yeah, that's a great, great suggestion.
All set with that? You have something else?
Yes. That looks like a fairly light agenda.
On the 19th, the work session for downtown, I just want to make sure that the main street, which is identified in the general plan, is a part of that.
No, it definitely is. In fact, I would ask in public that Annie talk to Ron later this week to make sure that there's a lot of time allocated to that discussion of downtown because it needs to be pretty comprehensive. It needs to include not only the discussion about the National Main Street Program that we started on Friday, but expand it to what it is his council wants to do with downtown, what it's, what kinds of commitments it's willing to make. It needs to be as thorough and robust as Friday started out being. And so, I would strongly suggest to Ron if, that he think about how much time to give that. We saw how much time tonight we took on the airport advisory commission. There are lots more layers to downtown, and so, we need a lot of time. I would think we'd need, we being the city, would need a lot of time for that subject. And so, I would encourage Ron to have a very limited agenda besides downtown and the website.
Okay. Having said that, we have need for executive session tonight for two items. Number one is discussion and possible action on 3rd Street, Andy Fine Parking Lot Lease. And the second item is discussion and possible action regarding city attorney evaluation and contract. Having said that, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved, but if I could, I'd also like to request.
Let me get a second first, if I could.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion on this item?
No, just a request for a five-minute recess so we can take opportunities to say.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Wish Mr. Bacon the best.
So, we're going to enter into executive session. We're going to call five-minute recess first. So moved? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
It's from two ninety one.
All this part of your body.